Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the special meeting of the Village of Tuxedo Park Board of Trustees, May 28th, 2024. The time is about 9:00, 9:08. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Shirley, Mayor Citron.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Lindsay.
Present.
Trustee Shaw.
Present.
And Trustee Brooke and Trustee Shara are both absent.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, just have a few comments. I'd like to start off with what happened last Thursday. Unfortunately, the village suffered a bit of a natural disaster. For those of you that don't live in the north part of the village, you probably may not be aware, but we had what was either a tornado or a microburst come through early in the morning, and it destroyed a huge number of trees, knocked them to the ground, old growth trees. And people living on Summit and Antio, Lookout Circuit, as well as some other roads, Cannon Hill, suffered extensive damage to their properties, primarily trees. Fortunately, there were no injuries. There was some damage to homes, sheds, fencing, but we were lucky that it was relatively early in the morning and nobody was out. There was a car crushed on Lurralard. But in the end, I think we should be very grateful. But those folks that were hit hard, you have our sympathies. The DPW got out immediately to clear the roads. Orange and Rockland came quickly to restore power. Some people had to wait 24 to 48 hours. But in light of the damage, everyone did a great job in restoring power and clearing the roads, and there's still work to be done. And to those of you that have trees down in your backyard, some of you have written to me and asked if the village can help in the removal of these old growth trees. Unfortunately, the village cannot do that. You'll check with your insurer and see if they're willing to cut them up and remove them. But unfortunately, it's not something the village can do. The village can only clear trees from public roadways and village property. Second thing I'd like to discuss is yesterday was Memorial Day. We honored those men and women that have fallen in combat during the many wars that this country has fought. As part of that celebration, we had a parade at the town of Tuxedo, which was well-attended. I marched in that parade. There was a moving ceremony at the end of the parade at the church. It was well-attended, and I thank everyone for coming, and I thank the supervisor and the town board for sponsoring it. With that being said, do any trustees have any comments they'd like to make? Great.
The only thing I would like to add, and I wish I had said it last week at our Board of Trustees meeting, is that next Monday, June 3rd, is the first of our public workshops for the Hamlet Revitalization Project. And this meeting will be with the engineers and the landscape architects that are going to present a preliminary plan for the Hamlet Business District. And we need and really welcome very much public input so that we can revise the plan and then finalize it and send it off with our grant applications. So that's 7 o'clock on Monday, June 3rd, in Town Hall.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Trustee Shaw, any comments you'd like to make?
No.
Okay, great.
Can I just say, I'm so sorry to...
Yes.
But just to... The planning board chair stopped in this morning, and he was telling me that they are one man short. So I just said, you know, we put out the word here. I know it's not anybody in attendance here, but there are people who review the meetings online. So they are looking for another member, and if you're interested, please contact us.
Thank you. And the planning board chair, Jay Rochscott, did make that announcement at the last scheduled board meeting last week, and we are seeking someone to fill the vacancy. Anyone who's interested, please feel free to submit your resume to either Chairman Rochscott or to me. My email address is available online, but for those of you that don't want it right now, it's mscitron@tuxedopark-nyork.gov. And now we'll move on to the items on the agenda. First item is approval of the meeting minutes of April 17th of 2024. I will make a motion to be resolved that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes from April 17th, 2024. Do I have a second before discussion?
I will second that.
Okay, discussion. Anybody? Any amendments, modifications, changes that any... The deputy mayor or the trustee wished to make on this particular set of minutes?
No. No, no preamble, so I'm good with it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Passed unanimously, 3-0. Okay. Next item on the agenda is modification of the 2024-2025 water fund budget. I'll make a motion, be it resolved, that the Board of Trustees modify the fiscal year 2024-2025 water fund budget to include appropriated surplus of $94,093 and change the amounts for New York State Retirement, Social Security, and Medicare to $21,528, $11,213, and $2,168 respectively. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by the deputy mayor. Discussion.
No, Elizabeth, can you explain to the public what it's for, these changes?
Just the budget that we had approved showed a net loss, and we cannot submit a budget with a net loss. So we added an item in appropriations to offset that net loss. We did the same thing last year, and so far, we haven't actually shown a net loss in the water fund budget. But at this point, that's what we need to do, to bring the numbers up so that they balance. And there was just a small, you know, formula mistake with the benefit funds. I referenced one personnel line, and I should have referenced two, so I just added in that second line. Very small changes.
Anything from the deputy mayor or the trustee on this resolution? No?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. The next item on the agenda, acceptance of a donation of a generator from the Tenaris, will be tabled until the June 26th regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. We need to get an estimate of the value of the generator that's acceptable to both the donee as well as to the village for the purpose of completing the resolution and adopting the same. The last item on the agenda is in addition. The state of New York is offering millions of dollars to local municipalities in grants for upgrades of the water system and sewer system. And as many of you are probably aware, including this board, we have a lot of work to do on our various utilities. As part of obtaining... As part of the application process, Weston and Sampson will be submitting the formal application. But the deadline being June 14th of this year, and our next board meeting being June 26th, it's necessary for the board to adopt a resolution authorizing Weston and Sampson to put in a grant application. And in terms of this application, we are talking about millions of dollars. So on Friday, the village engineer, Joe Zanga, was kind enough to draft a resolution, which I am now going to read into the record and then move to be approved. "The following resolution was duly offered. Resolution of the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Tuxedo Park, authorizing certain actions relating to a grant application pursuant to the New York State Water Infrastructure and Improvement Act, commonly known as WIIA. Whereas the Village of Tuxedo Park Village Board is applying for grant funding pursuant to New York State WIIA program offered through the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation, and whereas the Village Board desires to obtain grant funds to assist in completing the following village projects: 1. Tuxedo Park water main replacement; 2. WTP clear well upgrades; 3. East Village water main; 4. Mountain Road water main upgrades; and 5. Relocate Town of Water Tuxedo water meter, hereinafter referred to as the Village Water Infrastructure Projects. And whereas the Village Board intends to finance a portion of the project via issuance of a bond, and whereas the WIIA grant application requires this resolution to be approved by the Village Board as part of the application process, now therefore be it resolved that the whereas clauses are hereby incorporated by reference as set through fully herein, the Village Board authorizes the undertaking of the Village Water Infrastructure Projects at a maximum total cost of $3,686,280, including village financing, in the amount of $1,474,512 for the Village Water Infrastructure Project." I would note that we are not bound by this. This is only if we were in fact to get the grant.
Get all of it.
Yeah, get all of it, right. So this resolution does not bind us to spend this money without the grant. So as everyone's aware of that, that's important. "The Village Board hereby declares that in addition to the proposed grant funds in the amount of $2,211,768, the Village hereby commits to expend $1,474,512 for village financing, constituting the village portion of the funding of such Village Water Infrastructure projects. The Village Board hereby designates the mayor as the village representative, who shall be authorized to sign the funding agreement with the EFC as well as any associated documents. The Village Board intends to issue debt for the Village Water Infrastructure projects in the form of bonding. The mayor or any other village official, employer, consultant at the mayor's direction is hereby authorized to take any and all necessary actions to carry out the provisions of this resolution. This resolution shall be effective immediately. The question of adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly put on a roll call vote, which resulted as follows. Please call the roll. Madam Clerk."
Mayor Citron.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Shaw.
Aye.
Resolution.
Do we have a second on that, by the way?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The vote is 3-0. The resolution is thereupon duly adopted. Thank you very much.
Just a pointed discussion, even though we already voted. The bottom line is that they're going to apply for grants to cover all of the water projects in, you know, inflow and infiltration that they've identified.
Yes.
Right. So, you know, that's why it's the maximum amount that we... If we were granted monies for all of those projects, we are committing to pay 40%.
That is correct.
Yeah.
And the other... The bad news, of course, is that we've applied in the past for these grants, and they have not been provided to us. So this... We're making another effort. This is not the first time we've sought funding from New York State for these projects.
Don't ask, don't get. So gotta keep trying.
All right. Any other business from the deputy mayor or the trustee?
During the budget transfers.
Okay.
I did put it in for the resolutions.
All right.
But Mayor, I'd like to show you what I propose, the way it should always be done going forward.
Okay.
The budget transfers. We discussed it at the last meeting. Do you have them there, the budget transfers?
On the left.
Here we go. Yeah. Okay, this is what we have been shown in the past, the budget transfers. This is a spreadsheet that... Which is why we're having this meeting today, because I thought we were all going to have the same information. This is the way I think the trustees should be shown, the budget transfers. Not like this, because it's like, to me, in the back.
Are you able to share the screen?
I don't know how to do that. I'll ask...
You don't mind me leaning over to you?
I'll ask John to show it. But this shows you all the budget transfers for the fiscal year, as opposed to this way. Then you can see exactly... Because people might not know what this...
I think it's on the website, by the way. So I don't know, John, if you can...
But this is what... This is the way I think the trustees should be shown, the budget transfers going forward, where you see every month.
Month by month.
Month by month, and where it was taken from and where it's going. And in particular...
No, I'm sorry. The columns show...
Each month.
Each month.
Where it was taken from and where it's going to. Like, this is coming from...
Okay.
Unappropriated surplus. And then if you see... You'll see the negatives where... This is where it's added in. That's where it's taken out of, taken out of there.
A negative means it's taken out of.
Taken out of, because this, to me, means nothing. But this really tells you the whole picture. Can you pull that up?
I can pull up what's on the website.
Yeah, on the website. What is it called? Budget transfers, maybe? No, it's called...
There's only two items that refer to the budget on the website, so I'll let you know what the names are in a moment.
It's called... Budget Modification Reconciliation, I think is what it's called.
I have revised final budget. Okay, I have budget transfers and budget transfers to date are the two names.
Maybe budget transfers to date?
Here's budget transfers.
You know, I want to...
That one.
To date.
They are still being recorded. That was the one I just opened, and it's just budget transfers.
So our next meeting.
Nothing too late. Okay.
Probably the one to date. Yeah, that's the one.
Energy wire.
It's actually just the lighting.
Yeah.
But John will go with that. But it's more than just changing bulbs. It's a lot of safety issues that we're making.
Does that require any expenditure of village funds?
Yeah.
But only to pay for the awarding, or?
Oh, no, no, just to do the work.
Yeah, but the fact is, since we don't have to expend village funds, we don't need a resolution. We can just work with them. And once they provide the report, then we have to authorize the expenditure, right?
Well, we... No, we have the reports.
We do have the report, no.
And the work has to be done by the...
Oh, okay. All right.
Okay. Oh, good.
Yeah, good. Okay, so the public can see.
Okay. Yes, so the reason this... This is so much clearer for the public and for everyone to see where the money is going to or taken from. What I would like to make a really clear note of is that we have taken out, was it $274,000 from... What is it, the Unappropriated Fund, like whatever?
Surplus.
That we did not... The surplus that we did not budget for.
Right.
$274,000. And $270,000 of that went straight to legal fees for the election thing. So I think everybody should be aware what an impact these stupid legal lawsuits make on the village budget.
What line item does that refer to here?
She doesn't have it under anything. It... The line item is $3,000. But we don't have... It would be above that. So you see there, $190,000 is right above $3,001. But that's from $3,000 is where that comes from.
It should really be legal here.
Yeah. Well, not legal. It's from whatever surplus.
Appropriated surplus.
Appropriated surplus is where that should be from.
So why is it there?
Because it's above $3,001.
It's above. Okay.
She... But she's, I guess that we... I'm not sure, but that's where it's coming from.
I think it's here because it's the transfer that happened in October.
And then there's another one for $80,000, $84,000 in April.
But I still don't understand where that $190,000 came from. Just from surplus. So why... So why can't it be identified?
That's why I was saying, why doesn't...
Because we haven't taken from surplus in many, many years.
But there has to be something that goes in that hole.
I agree.
Surplus.
Yeah, okay, that's why.
But we have not budgeted for surplus.
Right.
Taking it from surplus since I've been on the board.
Oh.
So that's why it's probably it's not there.
Oh, okay.
But...
So wasn't there?
No, we got it.
Yeah, but the $3,000, the COA $3,000 isn't there. And so I was just explaining why it's not there, because we have not taken from surplus as long as I've been on the board.
I'm glad that you liked the spreadsheet that I put together.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to do that going forward. I think it should be totally...
Right, but this is just for the record, you know, last month, you know, they... This is two months squished together. So it does look a little bit like there's a lot more numbers than normally. Last month, there was just the two sets of numbers, and it's easier to see. At the end of the day, my feeling is that the hard part is creating the budget, anticipating to the best of your ability what your expenses will be and your revenue so that you can put forward the minimum tax burden needed to fulfill those obligations. Once that's done, at that point, it's very simple. New York State has a law. You can't spend more than you budgeted. It's as simple as that. So what do you do when your expenses exceed what you budgeted? You have to pull money from some other source. And if you have a budget line where it's like you have more money than you've used, you can pull... New York State doesn't care. You can pull it right in. So that's basically all this is. It's just we've already spent the money, for the most part, not 100%, but...
I think trustee Shaw's point is that, yeah, we pulled money out of surplus, but we pulled it out for one purpose, which was legal fees, right?
Mostly.
Mostly.
Mostly legal fees.
Yeah, $274,000, is that what it was? I don't scroll.
It was $274,000, of which $270,000 went to legal fees.
There's the breakdown, the one idea, the 84.
Yeah. Yeah. But yeah, but the 84 is not all for legal fees. The legal fees was $190 plus 80. So there's another $4,000 for somewhere else. I'm not sure where.
And the budget... The legal fees were budgeted at what?
$140,000. And now it's at $410,000.
It ended up being $410,000. Okay, the actual.
Year to date, we might have more. I don't know.
It seems to be more things.
Couple more days.
Couple more days.
Yeah. And then the other thing, I wish Jeff were here, because I'd really like to understand. Here's the other big item is this. If you could scroll down, John, if you don't mind, to 5110. Street maintenance contractual, where we had budgeted $200,000 for the roads. And we had to transfer another $121,000 into it. So I'd like to understand where the difference was, like how it was so...
Wasn't there something about that it wasn't done one year, and so two years' worth of work was done?
No, I think...
No, that wasn't it?
I think... Correct me if I'm wrong, John, but I think that the budget that we got from Jeff, it was just the cost of, basically, the asphalt, whatever the company is. $200,000 or something like that. But there were a lot of other costs that were not part of what Jeff submitted, which is like the rental of equipment, and I think that's why it went over. But I think that's something you need to know for long-term planning, because that's a huge, you know, number compared to what we were given in the budget.
And John did... I mean, I'm sorry. Jeff gave us the projected projects.
But that's only street... That's only the cost of the asphalt.
Right, right.
So you need to figure out how much more it's going to be than that. And I don't think we need to do all of those. That's all of like the wish list, but yeah.
Yeah, there's some...
There are other costs involved.
Mm-hmm.
Apart from just the whatever, the payment.
I think we have to speak to Jeff. I think those costs represent just about everything, the asphalt. And we do have to hire a second company if we want the roads to be brought down or if a road is...
We need milling.
Milling, yeah.
And those costs I provided in that spreadsheet, and I actually separated the two streets that Jeff wanted milling done. I don't have it in front of me, but the lower part of that spreadsheet, there's two streets where he recommended milling.
Right.
And he had estimates for the milling and the asphalt.
Okay.
I think it was Tower Hill and Circuit or something like that, but they seem low to me.
Well, the only thing we have to go by ticket is we are using the county prices, and the county does go out to bid every, I think, early in the spring, if not late winter, to get the best prices for the municipalities. So I think we're getting the best asphalt price that we can get. And I don't know how many companies actually do milling. We have to ask Jeff if there's really other companies we should consult with.
Yeah, I just thought the numbers looked low, me, the two roads that needed milling.
Oh, it's all done by square footage and tons, even though the prices I noted in Jeff's spreadsheet when I typed it up, the prices did increase around 4%, I believe.
Yeah, he said four and a half or something like that. Or no, 5.4%, I think. And then as far as the milling goes, because every year it just keeps... The roads keep rising. Do you know how many inches that is of milling in that quote?
I did not discuss with Jeff, or I did not note how many inches they were taking down. I think it was all in terms of tons and not how many inches they were taking down.
Because I think that's something that we, long-term, need to look at. Because if you look at the Hennessy seniors, by their house, there's about this much distance between the road and the gutter. And I think we really need to, long-term, focus in on that. And then Tower Hill, if they don't take it down further, it's almost already parallel, the gutters with the road. Like, maybe there's this much that you have. So if you can check with Jeff on that?
I'll check with Jeff. And more importantly, I've had discussions with Joanne Hanson about a few other things that, you know, she recommended, and I discussed with her about changing, as far as scheduling and getting things done earlier in the season and not typically, you know, in October.
Okay.
Yeah, no, that's a great point. And at our last long capital planning meeting, I brought up the Cornell Local Road Program. It's something that the town highway department uses as far as helping to plan. And so Joanne and I are going to take a look at that. And I thought maybe I would get in touch with Shane down in the highway department. He could maybe talk to us about how they use that program.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
We may have one other item.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
So I believe because of deadlines, John had been working with Orange and Rockland to get a lighting on it for all buildings. And it's two goals. Obviously, one is to reduce energy costs, but more importantly, or equally important, is safety issues that were identified. And for instance, there's, I believe, is it in the lodge, John, where light, you have to go downstairs to turn it on if you're upstairs?
It was never brought to our attention. One of the hallways in the lodge, there's not a three-way switch at the top of the staircase.
Right.
So at night, you essentially have to go down the staircase in the dark.
And to turn the light on.
Yeah, and no one's ever brought that to our attention. Most of us, if we go there, we're there during the day, so you never even realize it. So there's a few things like that that they want to change, including locations of some of the lights and getting some better lighting for the police officers when they come in from the parking lot on the town side of the lodge. And there may be a few others. It was a pretty lengthy report.
It was a great report, and we could forward it to the board. But the bottom line is that there's a deadline of June 30th, correct, to have the work done? Am I correct on that?
I think the 30th is for the work, and I think a few days prior, the contract, I guess, has to be signed. I don't remember the exact date right now.
So can we wait until the next Board of Trustees meeting, or should we?
Well, I think because our next Board of Trustees meeting is later than expected, I think we have to do something earlier than that.
Right.
But as we discussed last week, I'm going to try to get a more accurate listing of what the actual savings are, electricity related to just new electrical work to be done, just to make things safer.
Right. The report is for everything, you know, with the energy cost savings as well as safety projects. And so John is going to ask them to give us a break-even on the energy cost-saving piece. And then the savings piece, I mean, the safety piece, obviously, we should do. There won't be energy cost savings. Uh, there won't be energy cost savings.
No, I, I, I understand.
Okay, okay, I just wanna.
Do we have, do we have a number? I don't.
We, we have a number. We, the, the total project is, I think, twenty-eight thousand. They're offering eight thousand dollars in, um, a, a grant, not a grant.
Rebates.
Rebates, so it's approximately twenty thousand dollars is the cost of the entire project.
So what the breakdown is this, that, um, the, the contractor cost was about forty-five hundred.
Hmm.
Okay, so that has to be paid, um, now. The O and R piece for the supplies is, um, sixteen thousand.
Yeah, I, I, my, I'm sort of.
Let me just finish.
Yeah.
Um, it can be paid over two years. So the first year would be the contractor cost and eight thousand, it'd be twelve thousand. And then the second year would be the other eight.
Since, ha- have you seen the trustee Shaw? Have you seen this report?
No.
I haven't. I, I, I am reluctant to approve an appropriation, um, till every board member has had a chance to look. And I'm perfectly willing to gather again a week from now.
Okay.
Uh, you know, I, I don't know how you feel about that, but I.
I can do this, later this week, next week I can't.
Yeah, but I, but, but I'm, I just, I, I'm just uncomfortable.
Sure.
Uh, authorizing an appropriation and unless every trustee and myself has at least had a chance to see what the, the proposed expenditures are. So, um, I'm, I'm willing to schedule a, a special meeting. We can do it during the day, we can do it in the evening, whatever works for anybody, I'm always around. Um, so if you want to do that now, we can do it now and put that on the agenda. And meanwhile, the report will circulate. And then we can discuss it in full.
Well, the, yes, and before, I, I, I wasn't, I'm sorry if I wasn't, uh, I just wanted to bring it up and the deadline.
Well, the dead, that will be.
And not to say, we have to approve this today.
Yeah, okay.
But, um, we do have to approve it soon. Because we can't wait to the next Board of Trustees meeting, was my point.
That necessitates a special meeting, which I'm, I'm all in favor of. So, uh, would you like to pick a, would you like to pick a, a date?
I can do any day this week, if you want to do it later this week.
How about Friday?
Friday?
Uh, no, I'll be in the city all day. Um, I mean, I think it could wait till next week.
It might take me a little bit more.
Or the weekend.
It might take a little longer to get us a, get us a more concise report.
Yeah, so.
How much time do you need, Jeff?
It's not really me, it's the company that prepared the report. We wanted them to give us a clear understanding of the efficiencies.
Um, so if, so, um, well, would you be able to, if we could, if Paul could come in, then maybe you could, would you be, uh, available?
I, I can do.
Oh, yeah, 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 except Friday is a tricky day for me, but otherwise, um.
We don't know Paul's.
So we'll have to get, we'll have to ask Paul when he could.
All right, so we'll, uh, we'll, we'll.
Or Josh.
We'll survey, we'll survey the board.
He also.
We don't have to, we don't have to set it now, we'll survey the board and we'll pick a date that works for at least three of us. Okay, is that fair?
That's.
And in the meantime, um, circulate the memo to, to the board members, so they can review it in, in preparation for the special meeting, okay?
So. I'm sorry, uh, what, what did we do with the, uh, transfers, budget transfers?
Oh, we haven't gotten there yet. We were, we had other discussions, but we haven't, uh, we haven't a- approved yet.
All right, so that, I think that takes care of, uh, old business and actually new business. Anything else before we move on to budget transfers? No? Okay, the next item is budget transfer.
We, we, the, on the generator, we're deferring that.
Yeah, we're tabling that till we get a number that everyone can agree on, yeah. That's gonna be tabled to the June twenty-sixth meeting. So we've done the grant, we've, we've discussed the energy survey. So we'll move on to item number seven, which is budget transfers. And I'll turn to either trustee Shaw, a deputy mayor, or the village clerk for discussion.
Well, I think as, um, Elizabeth was saying earlier, uh, these are necessitated by, you know, over expended, you know, items that came in over, uh, and under budget. So where, uh, there is money, uh, that is not being used, we can transfer it to items where we do need it, because the budget items, you know, were exceeded. So that's simply what we're doing here. And I think that next year, we spent so many hours, didn't we, all of us? Um, going through the budget and checking lines and changing things around. So I, I think the, that this coming year will be good to see how we do on our budget versus actual. And we'll just keep refining it until.
It's never gonna be perfect.
It, it can't be, it's, it's just our best, uh, estimation of what costs are gonna be.
Um, I, I would like to propose, though, that going forward, I don't know if we need to have a resolution or not, but that we, the budget, the board be presented with budget transfers in the Excel, uh, spreadsheet that's, uh, uh, on the screen.
See to do.
So that everybody can see what's going on. Number one, uh, transparency. And then, as I pointed out, um, we did not do a bad job, really, of budgeting, except for in two places. One was illegal, which is, uh, we, uh, under budgeted that by two hundred and seventy thousand. And then also in, um, the, uh, road maintenance that was under by a hundred and twenty-one thousand. So.
I also think it's, it's, you know, I hate to hear people say, you know, we didn't, we didn't do a bad job. It's like, you do the best job you can.
Yeah, what, no, I.
You just, you do, and everybody tried and it's, it's quite all right, you know, it's just, you do the best job you can and, and then, you know, if, if you have a little left, leftover in one line, you put it into the other line where it's needed. It's not a big deal at all.
Um, yeah, but, and, and then also, as I pointed out earlier, we had, did not have the, uh, whatever the appropriated surplus line for years, because we didn't need that. Now it will be part of.
A monthly report.
And part of the budget going forward, I guess.
Yes, yes, but this is a, this will be good for monthly report, this new.
Uh, yeah, it should be.
Spreadsheet.
Yeah, the spreadsheet should be this way always, so that everybody knows where.
It all comes to the same thing, some things increase and some things decrease.
Right.
Kind of you want for one, but sometimes it's not.
Yeah, but this way you see it and it's not in a vacuum, like that. You see the historical part of what's been done, so.
Okay, that's it.
Yeah, no, that's great, I'm glad we're gonna.
So we all agree this is a new format spreadsheet.
No, we don't need a resolution for that.
No.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Anything else, deputy mayor, trustee?
So we have to vote on the budget.
Oh, the budget transfers, yeah.[1756.61]